Good evening and welcome to the October 2nd meeting of the Planning Commission. Tonight's agenda is available on the counter along with the request to speak cards. A reminder to everyone that the request to speak cards should be completed and returned to the clerk prior to the completion of any staff presentation. For those speakers wishing to speak on items not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the commission, please write the item number on your card. All speakers tonight will be limited, as always, to three minutes. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and televised so all speakers in order to be recognized must be called on by the chair and come forward to the microphone. Speaking in public may cause some individuals to be uncomfortable, so everyone is asked to be professional and respectful at all times. Thank you. We'll start off with the Pledge of Allegiance and Commissioner Olson, welcome back.
Please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll start off with presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the commission. I don't have any other requests to speak. So we'll go on to item B, which is Correspondence and Staff Communications.
Yes, thank you Chair Perez. Two items to note for you tonight. First of all, you should have a memo from Kathy Allen regarding item number three in front of you tonight. And then second of all, you all should have received a letter from the City Clerk's office regarding your terms expiring at the end of this year and the need to reapply for if you wish to stay on the commission, but I believe the date is November 28th. If you have any questions about that at all, you can contact myself or the City Clerk's Office directly regarding how to do that. So that concludes staff communications at this time.
Thank you. Do I have any disclosure of expertise communications? I'll start on my left. And to report.
Madam Chair, I've had previous discussions with a neighbor and competing project for item number three.
Thank you. Commissioner Olson?
Item number three. I've had communication with the applicant and neighbors on item number three also.
Commissioner Guerrero?
I had communications with the resident on item number two.
Thank you. I have nothing to report. We'll go on to the consent agenda, consideration and approval of the minutes for our September 18th meeting.
I'll move that we approve the minutes of the September 18th meeting.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
I need abstain on that one.
We have one abstention. Commissioner Olson? Moving on to item number two, request for zoning administrators' determination of modification to the River Glen Estates tentative subdivision map.
Chair Perez, I do not see the applicant for this item present at this time. We were expecting her to be here.
Okay.
And so if the commission wishes to have her present for this item, which we think would be prudent, perhaps you may wish to either take this item up after item number three, or perhaps we can take this at another meeting. I'm not aware of it being an urgent matter, but with her not here right now.
Yes.
I was going to move that we reshuffle the agenda to place item number three in front of item number two, and if the applicant shows up, great. If not, maybe we should continue it.
Okay. Can I have a second?
I need a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. We'll move on to item number three, the continued public hearing regarding Crown Castle Wireless Communication Facility Conditional Use Permit for the 1245 Linden Road property.
Associate Planner Kathy Allen will present this item.
Good evening Chair Perez and members of the commission. The project before you is a conditional use permit for a wireless telecommunications facility which would be located at 1245 Linden Road. Project has been continued several times, most recently from the September 18th Planning Commission meeting. The commission has discussed this project at length at several meetings. I'll be brief with my comments. Project consists of a 105-foot-tall monopine structure and two equipment buildings. Since the last public hearing, the height of the monopine has been reduced from 125 feet down to 105 feet. The facility would be located approximately 240 feet from the existing residence. The project site does contain a number of heritage-sized trees, including a very large heritage oak tree, which is located approximately in the middle of the parcel. The applicant did have an arborist report repaired regarding the condition of the trees. There are 26 trees located on-site, of which 13 are deemed to be heritage-sized trees. Of the seven walnut trees that are proposed to be removed for the project, five are of heritage size, however, two of those are in poor condition and the arborist would recommend removal of those anyway. The report states that the very large heritage oak would not be endangered by the relocation of the leach fields. The city's urban forest manager has reviewed the arborist report at length and has concurred with the recommendations contained therein and also the recommendations as presented in the staff report. Staff is recommending approval of this project as all findings can be made for the project. This project has been continued multiple times. Staff must stress to the commission that the project is nearing the end of the 150-day shot clock, and because of that, we would urge a decision on this project tonight if at all possible. That does conclude staff's presentation. The applicant is present and has a presentation for you as well. We'd be happy to entertain questions now or after the applicant's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you Kathy. I will go ahead and open the public hearing and ask the applicant to come forward.
Good evening Chair Perez and commission members. Katie, can you open that first slide, please? Thank you. So tonight, we want to talk about the changes in the plans that we have, our product in -- our project in general, and we've got some slides to go over with you, as well as why this tower has to move in the first place. My colleague would like to speak after that, and then at that point, we'll be glad to take any questions from you. Real quick, the plans before you, the really only -- the only change on the cover sheet is we do have the correct street address on there. I know that's important. Can you move to the next one, Katie, please? I believe you've seen this one before, however, now on the west and south side, we've gone ahead and shown the landscaping as conditioned to the project to assist in the screening of the equipment. And then can you go to the next one for me, Katie? So this sheet was prepared specifically to address the concerns of the commission about the existing septic system, which is shown on the left. On the right, we're showing the proposed new well relocation, which is going to be on the north side of the property. The new septic system, which is south of the house, the 100% replacement system. Can you pan back up? Thank you so much. The 100% replacement area below the leach field, the radiuses that you see depict the area of the well and the distance from the well to the septic system themselves. So the reason why this is important is this has been submitted and reviewed and approved through Yolo County Environmental Health, and so I believe we've solved that issue. Can you roll to the next one for me, please? Thank you. So this is probably the biggest change since the last time we met. The tower is now 100 feet tall. It's 105 if you include the tree canopy shown on there. It has the same number of carriers as the current tower. It's essentially identical to the existing tower, and it's also identical to the recently approved Hart Tower. And then if you could flip to that last one. These you've seen before are options of design. They too have been reduced in size, so these are still options that are available for your review. I think that takes care of the questions that were outlined in the staff report from the commission. Are there any questions that I can answer on the current design from the commission? If not, we'll move on, but I can -- I'm just going to go through. It'd probably be easier to address them as we go along, so.
Sure. I do have some specific questions about the design changes. First, I appreciate the design on the equipment shelters and your work on that, and I do, just as a comment, believe the tree is the most appropriate, so I won't be making any comments on the other two. Regarding the septic leach field, how do you not underground a septic leach field? How does that work?
If you study the conditions, the design guidelines by Yolo County Environmental Health, you have to be a certain distance from the water table. If you can't maintain that distance, then you put the system in above grade.
Do you cover it?
Yes. We hope so. It's a mounted system, and yeah, so we do.
All right. Thank you. And the report does specify seven trees to be removed. Two of those are -- should probably be removed anyway. Is that correct? How far from the property line is the proposed tower? Or from the nearest residential property line? I didn't see that in the report. I recall a number, but I wanted to be sure.
From the nearest? Say again?
Residential property line?
The nearest residential property line is the south, and I think it's about 35 feet.
And there's a mention of a secondary septic system?
Well, when you design a system, you're required by their design codes to provide 100% replacement. So in 30 years, if the new one we're proposing fails, we have to demonstrate there's enough room on the property to install another one.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other design questions on that?
Yeah, just a second. Do you have one question?
Yeah, just a quick one. I'm glad to see that you came up with a new design for the barn. The only -- I would have kind of liked to have seen the barn because this kind of looks like a tough shed, you know? But I was kind of hoping that we really designed it like a barn. It's got that little thing on top of it.
Well, we're showing -- it's kind of hard to see on this, but we are showing board and batten, and we can certainly, you know, we can go into more architectural details.
But I hope that what you have is, you know, like a little red barn sitting out there. I think it'd look a lot nicer. I think it's a great idea.
We appreciate that.
Just for the other comment, if you'd like, I really like the water tower.
Well, it's certainly an option.
Commissioner Guerrero? Regarding the leach field that's currently in existence and its appearance, and then the future one that'll be moved, and that, what will that appear like if you're walking along the street?
Having walked the street a number of times, I don't think you can see it, to be honest with you.
So it's not elevated?
It is elevated, but it's probably only elevated a foot or two above the ground, and so it'd be kind of difficult to see as you were walking by because it's obstructed by the house and all the foliage that's out there.
Okay. That's good. All right. Thank you.
Commissioner Olson, do you have any questions at this time?
I think you answered it. My question was, what distance is the base of this tower from that southern property boundary? You said 30?
There's a 20-foot line that you can see, and then the tree is being --
The 20-foot line is kind of out in the middle of nowhere. It doesn't really touch the -- it really doesn't touch the equipment shed or the tower. So I was curious on what the actual distance was. I didn't see it on the plan either.
I don't have a scale with me, but you can see the 20-foot setback, and so I'm going to guess that the center of the tower is about 30 feet from the south residential property line.
Okay, 30?
Somewhere between 30 and 35.
Is that it?
Yeah.
Okay. Commissioner Olson, did you have anything? And you said that the property owner wanted to speak as well? Is that correct?
No, I've got some slides that I still want to continue on, so.
Thank you.
Katie, could you open up that next one, please? So while this is opening, we thought this was very helpful to show the commission the reason why the tower has to go away in the first place. Thank you so much, Katie. I was just going to ask that. If you could blow that up a little bit, that'd be great. So what this is, this is the 65% strip map designed for the Sacramento River Levy Project, and this can be found on Wasafka's website, along with many other designs. So this project is really extensive. It's six miles in length. The north end will connect to the existing Village Parkway north of the intersection of Lake Washington Boulevard, and it'll go south all the way to Davis Road. So this section in particular shows the effect that the levee work will have on Linden and South River Road. So that's kind of in the center of where Katie's got it. So we just felt that it was important that you see why this tower has to move out of there among all the other properties. So before this can start, what's shown in green is they have to construct a bypass, and that bypass will route all the traffic currently on South River Road onto the bypass to make room for the levee. So once that levee road is in, then South River Road can be completely demolished. And that demolished area goes from Lake Washington Boulevard to point south of the yacht club. They've even made provisions, if you see the green street going towards the river, to keep the Sacramento Yacht Club access open. But as you can see, there isn't any access between those two points on South River Road. Everything comes off of the new bypass and then Linden Road. And then Katie, do me a favor and zoom in, probably about 300% right on our project, please. There you go. A little bit more, please. That's okay. It's easy to get lost when it's that magnified. You've got to go down. There you go. There. Okay. So that's a pretty good view. So in this view, you can see the location of the tower that has to be removed. If you pan down a little bit, right there, you can see the X there. That's the tower that has to be removed. So we need to move the tower completely out of the sphere of the -- all of the influence of the levee work before the levee begins, the levee work begins. That's kind of critical. But before we can move out of the way of the work of the levee, we need to construct a new tower, a new base station, install all new equipment on the tower, energize the tower, and then, once that's complete, we can remove the equipment from the old tower, remove the tower, and then decommission the tower. So we have to be out of the way before the levee work starts, but in order to do so, we need a new location prior to the levee work beginning. So it's really not practical for us to move from the existing tower location within the sphere of influence of the levee project to another parcel, also within the sphere of influence of the levee project, which is the recently approved Hart parcel. We need to be at a location completely unaffected by any of the work associated with the levee project. We cannot relocate to the Hart parcel because the parcel cannot be developed until after the levee work is complete. As you can see, all of the access to the site and ultimately all the power and telephone to that site will be demolished for some undetermined amount of time. And as we have to move the existing tower before the levee work begins, we cannot locate on the Hart parcel until after the levee work is complete. So we need a location for the tower. Now, there are those in this audience that will appear before the commission tonight and try to convince the commission that the tower can be located on the Hart parcel before the levee works, and further, that all of the conditions of approval can be met as required by CUP 14-03, that the final design approval can be obtained by West Sacramento Area Flood Control Agency, a building permit from the City of West Sacramento can be obtained, that permits can be obtained from the Army Corps of Engineers, from the Department of Water Resources, or any other permits from any other required agencies, that the access easements can be obtained for the access road from the Reclamation District, that the utility easements can be obtained from the Reclamation District, and that a new power distribution system can be installed and paid for by PEG and E. And maybe that can happen, you know? We don't know. We just don't know. But this is what we do know. The access to the site and the power to the site will be unavailable for some time, some undetermined amount of time, and because of this, we can't locate to the site. Crown Castle has long-term contracts with the following carriers. We have a contract with T-Mobile that expires in 2037, with Verizon that expires in 2029, with Nextel that expires in 2037, and Sprint also expires in 2037. So these existing contracts with these carriers require the carriers to move on to the new tower as long as the RF objections are met. These carriers are contractually obligated to relocate to the new tower that we're proposing at 1245 Linden Road because Crown owns the tower. One of Crown's responsibilities outlined in these contracts is that we must maintain this infrastructure 24/7, 365 days a year. We therefore cannot locate on a parcel that will be without power and access. So we're still looking for that location for a new tower. Can you bring up slide five for me instead of four? And then can you rotate it to the right for me? Thanks. You can just leave it at that size for right now. That's perfect. Now, we like this slide. We're encouraged by this slide. This is the site plan for the project where the commission was able to find all five findings for a five-to-one approval on September 4th. We made this exhibit showing the location of the Crown Tower side-by-side with the Hart Tower. So can you blow that up for me, Katie, please, and kind of focus in on where the towers That's perfect. So as you can see, the distance between the two towers is 145 feet. So we're encouraged because if the commission was able to make all five findings for approval for the Hart project, then surely the commission can make the same findings for approval on an almost identical project 145 feet away. The 145-foot distance between the two identical projects cannot make a detrimental difference in the interpretation of the municipal code. So as we look at these two projects side-by-side, with the Hart project on the right and the Crown project on the left, this is what does not exist today. Can you pan down just a little bit? I'm sorry, the other way? Thank you. So the cul-de-sac that's proposed for the end of Linden Road, it's not there. It hasn't been built yet. The access road off the cul-de-sac at the end of Linden Road is not there because it hasn't been built yet. The power and telephone utilities in the access road shown on the drawings aren't in place yet. The eastern property boundary isn't there because it hasn't been created. The levee section shown on the drawing, can you pan towards the river for me? The levee section isn't shown because it's not built, but I would like to show you what that's going to look like. Can you go to slide four for me? If you could blow that up just a little bit. So this is kind of an interesting drawing. If you look, Katie, if you can drag that all the way that way, there we go. You can see where the river is, and then as you look from right to left, if you keep panning that way for me, Katie, thank you, you can see the section of the levee at the highest point, it's 40 feet. It steps back down, it steps back down, and then on extreme left, you can see the 20-foot operation and maintenance road. So this is all about 300 feet from the river, and this is what's going to look like in front of the Hart parcel. So the point of this view is it clearly shows that the access road cannot be installed until all of this earthwork is complete. You wouldn't build this road and then do all of that earthwork. You'd cut the road in afterwards. The proposed utilities in the operation and maintenance road cannot be installed until all the earthwork is complete constructing the levee section. And so once again, Crown must locate a tower outside of the sphere of influence of all the levee work before the levee work begins. This parcel does not meet that criteria. Can you go back to the site plan, please? Thank you. So let me sum up at this time, and then turn this over to my colleague Joe Parker, and we'll be happy to answer any questions. So I think it's important that you can now see what was the driver behind us having to move the tower and our limited abilities to do so. So the subject proposal before you meets the definition of the RRA designation as defined by the City of West Sacramento's Municipal Code. The subject parcel meets the minimum lot size of the RRA designation as defined by the City of West Sacramento's Municipal Code. The project complies with the City of West Sacramento's Wireless Telecommunications Facility Policy. The property is not encumbered by the levee project, Army Corps of Engineers, planned completion, West Sacramento Flood Control Agency approval, offers of sale, creations of parcels and easements, property demolition, road abandonment, or any other issues associated with the construction of the levee. The parcel has four corners and is a recorded legal parcel. Can you pan just that way? Pull the drawing that way? So I'm talking specifically about the Crown property, obviously. Access to the property is already in place from Linden Road, which is unaffected by the proposed cul-de-sac because it's north of the areas of improvement. Power and telephone utilities are within reach from Linden Road to the proposed equipment This location allows for the new tower to be constructed on-site to completion before the existing tower is removed with no uncertain timeline constraints presented by the levee widening project. This location will have no interruption of access or power. This location will have no interruption of access or power. This location requires no easement access, no e, access easements or utility easements or any other governing body approval associated with the levy project. All required permits for development on this project are obtained from the City of West Sacramento and Yellow County Environmental Health. The project was recommended for approval by staff on July 17th, 2014. The project is again recommended for approval by planning staff on October 2, 2014. With planning commission approval tonight, we can commit to moving the tower as requested by the City of West Sacramento and the West Sacramento Area Flood Control Agency. So, at this time, I'd like to turn this over to my colleague, and then we'll come back up for questions.
Good evening, members of the commission. My name is Joe Parker on behalf of Crown Castle. I will just briefly cover some of the legal issues, which I believe are germane to your consideration this evening. From a legal perspective, I would ask that the commission meaningfully consider its obligation to comply with federal law, which prohibits a local government from denying a permit for wireless communications facility. Where doing so would prohibit or have the effect of prohibiting the provision of wireless services. And in that regard, the courts have looked at two criteria, which are important for the commission to consider, and that is whether a significant gap in coverage exists and whether the proposed facility would provide the least intrusive means of securing or eliminating that gap in coverage. You've heard from my colleague with respect to the gap in coverage, the record is very clear that indeed a coverage gap will occur when this tower is relocated. I don't think there's anything in dispute about that, and the commission itself has recognized that this is an important criteria that is undisputed in this hearing. With respect to the least intrusive means, you have our rather extensive alternative site analysis, which not only discusses the feasibility or buildability, if you will, of the particular project at this proposed location, but also the infeasibility of alternative locations such as the Hart property. And with respect to the aesthetics issues, I note that the commission concluded with staff's analysis that the project should include the placement of screening trees for the Hart project and other aesthetic or camouflage effective measures such as landscaping, and those are the same requirements that Crown is prepared to comply with here this evening. We also note that there is not a material difference, as my colleague has pointed out, with respect to the locations of these two towers. Admittedly, our tower is closer to the property line than the Hart proposed tower. I don't think that that is a significant or material deviation from the aesthetic issues which staff has recommended we address and have been, or will be addressed by both the Hart application as well as the Crown application. And so, with that in mind, I just ask you to also consider the requirements of federal law, which prohibit local governments from discriminating unfairly against providers of functionally equivalent services. And to the extent that my client is prepared to meet each and every one of the conditions that staff has recommended in this application, I believe that the commission is required under federal law to grant our application this evening. And as my colleague has mentioned, we're happy to answer any questions the commission may have, and we thank you for your time.
Thank you. I'll start on my left, Commissioner Austin. Do you have any questions?
No further questions.
Any further questions, Commissioner Austin?
Yeah. Least intrusive, what, what is exactly meant by that? Can we go back to that for a second?
Well, the courts have essentially talked about the least intrusive means in relation to land use values embodied in the local regulations. In other words, that could include things like aesthetics, as we've discussed here. My understanding of the commission's concerns largely have been with regard to aesthetics, the appearance of this facility as it relates to neighboring residential parcels. So, in that context, I would think that you would be focusing on the aesthetic issue. More importantly, though, we have bigger problems, as I've noted, or actually as my colleague has noted, and that is the infeasibility to build at other alternative locations, desired locations, which the commission has expressed interest in, such as the Hart property. So, to that end, I don't think we even have to get to the aesthetic issues because we're not able to build, as you know, within the Hart parcel for the very reasons explained with respect to relocation of this facility and the need to maintain service at all times. If we do get to the aesthetic issue, though, I do think you have ample evidence before you that Crown is prepared to undertake substantial screening measures. As noted in the environmental report, the conclusion is that there is not a material difference between one project versus the other in terms of, as, in terms of the aesthetic issue. So, I think that's plainly addressed in the record before you as well.
Okay. Well, a few meetings ago, we had our flood control people in here, and they said that the Hart project was probably doable. They were 99% sure?
We don't disagree.
Okay. Well, fine.
I think the issue that we have, though, is, is the commission's...
Well, what I'm hearing is you're saying that, that it's not doable because of the deflection...
No, we're not saying that at all.
Because of the levy construction.
What we're saying is, we have to construct the tower, but before, before we can take that down, we have to construct a tower somewhere. Right now, today, you can't build on the Hart parcel because of all the issues that I just raised.
And, and I would add that the, the commission's consideration is, a consideration of the circumstances that exist as of today before you today. We can't live in a vacuum and hope that things will fall into a place for us in the future. And that is precisely the problem that we have. There's speculation about use of the neighboring property, about how this property is going to be developed. Things are still very much in a fluid situation, and we have an application that needs to be granted or denied in this instance today, not in the future.
Clearly, your conditions of approval involve a multitude of, of agency approval and design that do not exist today. So, we're not saying it's not buildable. What we're saying is, we can't move our tower there today, get this done, take that tower out, and be done and move on. That's all we're saying.
I think this commission's scope is a little bit wider than just a static view of what's there today. I mean, this is the planning commission. It's forward-looking. It's also past-looking as well.
I, I don't disagree with you, but given the similarity of the designs of both, both projects, I, I'm not sure what the open question would be other than the commission's concern about its proximity to property lines, because that has been the issue that has been discussed here before, at least in the multiple hearings that I've been present for.
That's all for now. Thank you.
Commissioner Moore? Commissioner Guerrero?
I do have a question regarding your existing contracts with the carriers, and I just wanted to confirm with you whether there are no conditions that could terminate the contracts as stated in the letter September 17th to David Tilly, last page stating that the carriers are contractually obligated to relocate to the new tower. And, so, would you consider that a firm commitment then that you have as part of the requirements and conditions that are stated in the report?
Absolutely. And, you know, the, the consideration that the carriers undertake is whether or not the coverage objectives of each of those carriers can be met at the alternative location. And once that issue has been cleared, they relocate where the tower is reconstructed.
So, I just wanted to make sure I got that clarification correct, and there is nothing that could, under our current circumstances, that could possibly terminate the contract?
If a carrier wanted to terminate a contract, I'm, I'm clear, I'm positive that there are ways that they could terminate the contract for reasons that would be unrelated to a relocation. For example, if they determined that there was no longer a service need in the area, they could probably terminate the contract. How they terminate that contract and under what circumstances, I really can't speak to. But there, I'm certain there are provisions in there that would allow them some flexibility with respect to their own coverage needs. But that's an entirely different issue about relocating to a facility where their coverage needs are met.
And have you had any, any discussions or any kind of communication with them stating that they are committed at this point in time?
Me personally, but, no, but my client for sure. And that's a major step for us to ensure that they are coming with us, and there's been a substantial amount of communication verifying that they are indeed relocating to the new facility.
Okay.
Could I ask a question now?
One more.
Okay. Well, only because I thought that the last couple of meetings, somebody said they weren't going to come onboard.
So, the, the project has also included the potential co-location of a new carrier, AT&amp;T, at the site. And so, there's been a fair amount of question of whether or not AT&amp;T would co- co-locate onto our existing facility. That's an entirely separate question about the existing...
I just thought there was somebody that said they weren't going to come.
That's a separate question than the existing carriers that are presently located on the tower. The existing carriers are coming with us. The indications that we have right now is that AT&amp;T has not made up their mind and may not come onto that tower.
That doesn't sound correct. In fact, Mr., I agree with Mr. Moore. Two of the carriers, we were told, were possibly, were merging, and therefore the four would drop to three, allowing for the AT&amp;T tower to be...
If I can speak to that, there may be some confusion because Sprint purchased Nextel.
Maybe that's, maybe that's what we were thinking.
So, in my business, there's no Nextel. Do we still have active contracts with them? You bet. Are they different entities? You bet. But on the commercial side, there's no Nextel anymore. So, that, that may have...
That would have been a misunderstanding on my part as well.
Yeah, maybe that's what we heard before. Like, somebody was dropping or somebody had merged.
That may have been what caused the confusion.
Yeah.
So, they don't merge their antenna?
I'm, I'm sorry?
So, Sprint slash Nextel require two sets of antenna or one? I think this is Charlie's question.
The, the, the elevation that we showed you tonight has four different elevation centers for antennas, and that's going to be exactly duplicated on the new tower.
Well, I mean, I, I guess we're back to what Russ is saying, too. I mean, if you have Nextel and Sprint have now become one, are you saying that they wouldn't just run out of one control room and then give you that ability to have another carrier come onboard?
No, because we...
You would think they have to still have two?
Correct. They'll, they'll each have a, a certain height on the tower. They're not going to consolidate. So, for the, for all intents and purposes, we still have four carriers. Part of the, one of the things I wanted to talk about, too, is, I know there's a question when there's a new cell tower, oftentimes the carriers come in and they support the tower. This is different. The carriers are under contract with Crown to maintain this tower and provide that service. This is a Crown issue. It's not a carrier issue because it's not a new tower. If we were putting a brand-new tower up in someplace where it doesn't exist, I can assure you, there would be carriers here, you know, to talk about it. But this is really a Crown issue. It's our responsibility to maintain this coverage and our contractual obligations.
Thank you. I have a few requests to speak. The first one is John Sneed. Just a reminder that we have a three-minute clock. Thank you.
No problem. Thank you very much. Thank you for the time this evening. I just wanted to touch on just a few things. I don't think I'll take very, very long. First of all, I would like to go through the items on the staff report as far as the findings go. The requested use is listed as conditional use, and staff says findings appear to be met by this request after a long analysis. The second finding is the requested use is essential or desirable, desirable for the public comfort and convenient. That appears to be met. The third, requested use will not impair the integrity or character of the neighborhood and nor not be detrimental to the welfare. That appears to be met. The requested use will be in conformity with the general plan. Number four, that also appears to be met. Adequate utilities and access roads, drainage, sanitation, and other things, that appears to be met. And what I want to, you know, is, as Crown Castle's pointed out, these are 145 feet apart. They are very, very much alike, but yet they're very much different in that this parcel that the Sneed Family Trust owns has much better access, much better roads, ease of utilities, no construction issues, as Crown talked about. So, in some instances, they're very much alike, but in some instances, they're very much different. The last thing I wanted to touch upon was an expiry communication that we got tonight from Mr. Hodson, who is, you know, the property attorney owner for, for the west of our property. And at one of the meetings he, he talked about previous to this, he, he basically said, if you would just give us more screening and provide more screening, you know, we'd, we'd be good with that. My, my terminology, but he was up here, and that's basically what he said. So, Crown has gone the extra distance, maybe by staff's recommendation. They've done more screening on the south, large trees, screening on the west, and they have also taken into your considerations because commission said that, you know, they like the idea of the, of the barn look. So, Crown has enclosed the equipment shelters in a barn look, and, and Mr. Moore said that he would like to have it look more like a barn. I can't speak for Crown, but I'm sure they can design this any way you want, paint it red, whatever you like. And, you know, they also talked about commission, some commissioners, there's been some debate on what unit you would want, whether it's be the monopine or the, or the, the water tower, and that is strictly up to your choice, I believe. So, at this time, I would just like to thank you for your time and recommend that this be approved because it does have some significant advantages over the other parcel, and it will allow the city's projects to continue like the road that they want to put in, and it won't slow down any, any of the levy work. It won't, you know, impact WASAFCA and any redesign because this project is completely far enough away from the levy. It has no impact on it, where the other project, which you've already approved, has many impacts, would cause redesign, and who knows, all the variables that go into all the issues that were brought up by the Crown people. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Sneed. Joseph Parker? Thank you very, thank you. Rick Hart?
Thank you. I'm Rick Hart. Members of the commission, I'd like to start off with a, start off with a letter from T-Mobile. Basically, I don't, I don't know the legal aspects of whether, but they're perfectly happy with my site and claim it is the best choice. In addition, I have a slideshow, and I'd like to go through one by one. You know, I hear all these problems. I spent 45 minutes with WASAFCA in a meeting, and I didn't hear any of these problems from the engineers, so I don't know where they come from, but they, they seem to come with, up with them. I don't know what it is. But we'll start with, when Katie comes back here.
You are limited to your three minutes, so...
I know. I'm already, I'm waiting for her to come push the button.
You could probably start at three when she gets back.
Okay. Well, under, okay. Denial is consistent with federal law. Under federal law, to obtain approval of its project, Crown Castle has the burden to demonstrate a significant gap in coverage exists, and its project is the least intrusive means for closing a significant gap. CUP 1402 is not necessary to close a significant gap in coverage. The commission's approval of the Hart project eliminated any potential gap in coverage. The tower planned for the Hart property, 105-foot monopine with four co-locations, and will close any future gap in coverage caused by the destruction of the current tower. We're on slide three. Yeah. Crown Castle's project, as proposed, will substantially impact the community and cause a greater burden on the neighborhood than will the Hart's project. Impacts from the Crown Castle's project include more intrusions to the surrounding residentially-zoned properties due to closer proximity to the neighbors, that's 30 feet, written and oral objections by neighbors' attorney regarding Crown Castle's project, removal of potential heritage oak trees, potential Swanson Hawk problems, uncertainty regarding the well and septic. In addition, I'd like that, that one to be passed out as well. That's an email from Dina stating in her opinion, when she wrote to Tilly, that the project as it stands would kill the heritage oak trees. I don't know what changed, but that was a statement that came out on July 8th and was not in your 17th staff report, by the way. Approval of CUP 1402... Approval of CUP 1403 makes Crown's Castle propose moot because no significant gap in coverage exists. Crown Castle's proposed facility is prohibited for failing to satisfy setback requirement policy G3. Crown Castle has required but failed to discuss alternative site locations and can provide reasons for rejections on policy H1. Crown Castle has failed to address, demonstrate, and justify its dismissal of the Hart property. In its most recent justification letter dated the 17th of this year of September, Crown Castle fails to mention it remains in negotiating with Hart, states it has rejected the Hart property, give its reasons for rejecting the already-approved Hart property. I was on the phone with these guys this week alone. The Commission should deny CUP 1402 because in comparison to the already-approved Hart project, it does not adequately preserve the character of the neighborhood, will impose a greater visual blight on the surrounding properties, will impair the nature, natural environment through the removal and potential damage to numerous heritage trees. It is not desirable aesthetically in the least, has greater community, community of impact on the surrounding area, and is not necessary to close a significant gap in coverage.
Your time's up, Mr. Hart.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And if they can't build it, I got three written offers from their competitors to do it.
Those were the three requests to speak that I have. I will go ahead and close the public hearing and come back to the board. I'll start on my left tonight. Commissioner Austin?
Yes, thank you all for coming out. I know we've had speakers come out for several meetings in a row. So, I appreciate everyone's patience throughout this. I, when I spoke during the review of the Hart proposal, I believe that I was the lone vote not in favor of that particular project. And one of the comments that I made was that I want a project to have, you know, all the dot their i's and cross their t's, et cetera. It's been my determination from the staff report and from the evidence presented today that the Crown Castle proposal meets all the criteria. I feel like it is ready to move forward. I don't have any concerns about any sort of gaps, not necessarily in coverage, but any gaps in the planning and approval process. I believe that the issues raised in prior Commission meetings have been thoroughly addressed. And I've also, I'm also, I understand that there is various contracts, but I do think that Crown Castle has made the strongest demonstration of commitment by existing carriers on the monopole or whatever it is that's proposed to be moved. So, I am currently in favor of moving staff recommendation, but I'm interested in hearing what my other Commissioners have to say.
Thanks, Commissioner Austin. Commissioner Leibig?
Thank you. Again, thank you for the presentation and for the wealth of information that we received tonight. And it was very helpful. I will say that. And again, I did appreciate the designs. I'm going to, I'll jump right into just articulating my thoughts where I am on this. I do believe, per staff's recommendation, that an M&amp;D is appropriate. However, I do not believe that we can make the findings and there's the reasons for this. One is the 40, 145 feet between the two towers may not appear significant, but one project is greater than 100 feet away from the nearest residential property, whereas one is 30 feet away, and that, I believe, is significant. I actually believe number two now cannot be met. The requested use, a tower, one tower, is essential. I will agree with that. However, we have approved a tower. So, is a second tower essential or desirable? I haven't seen where that has been proven and I don't agree with that one. And then, number three, again, I, we do have the authority to approve this tower, even though it doesn't meet the standards of our policy. But I disagree that, again, it will not impair the integrity of the neighborhood, given the 30 feet, which, again, is my biggest hang-up for this, for this project. So, for that, the, I believe that this project has a higher impact on the neighbors than the Hart, the proposed Hart project, which was able to meet a one-to-one setback. This project cannot do that. I also agreed with Mr. Olson that we are here to look at the long-term, not just the short-term impacts and benefits. This, in other words, I'm not just considering the construction period. We need to look at this over the next 30 years because that's how, probably how long this tower is going to be here. Also, WASAFCA, it is a project in planning, as is this project. And as much as the two are related, I also think that we can move the two forward as planning. That's sort of what planning projects are. It might prove to be difficult. There might be additional steps, but I'm actually confident that we can overcome some of those. Particularly, the access was articulated as being an issue. So was power. The tower being constructed prior to the levy construction would not have access issues as there is access to the site. The current site has power right now. The problem would be the power in, during construction, and I believe that could be worked out with WASAFCA. At least, I was led to believe that could be worked out with WASAFCA, and I have no reason to doubt that can't be. So, therefore, it hasn't been demonstrated, in my opinion, that the Hart project would lose power or access during levy construction. For that reason, I would vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Olson?
Yeah. Are we done questions or...
Um, do you have questions for staff or do you have your comments? You're done? I mean, you're, okay. Commissioner Moore? Questions, comments?
Yeah, I have, well, I don't, I have comments and I kind of have a couple of questions because I just don't understand part of this. And, you know, the findings, I'm struggling with a couple of the findings like Russ did, in particularly finding three, and that's because it's so close to a residential lot. And I, you know, David, I don't know. Maybe this is a question for you. But if we allow the tower to go in on Mr. Sneed's property and the gentleman to the west of him decides he wants to develop and build his lots there, does he have to, then does that person have to take care of the setbacks and be 100 feet away from the tower?
No.
Why?
The obligation is on the tower. It's not on the obligation of the other parties.
Well, and that's what makes finding three so difficult for me to make is because of that. We're so close and you're right there. And I was curious then if we had to have the property built 100 feet away from it. But if that's the case, then, I mean, number three is tough to make. In fact, almost impossible to make. I won't talk about the other findings because I think Russ talked about them. One of the conditions that, and I think you and I talked about this a little bit, David, on the Hart project is all the expenses to improve the property and get it ready on the Hart project, we had a condition in there that they were going to have to spend that money themselves and take care of it themselves. I guess just overall, looking at all the things that need to be done on the Crown Castle project, being the septic, the wells, the landscaping, the road, bringing in electricity, is the applicant responsible to take care of all those improvements? Or would they, Crown Castle try to have WASAFCA or the City of West Sacramento take care of some of those improvements?
Those are, you know, those are part of the project and site development costs, you know, trying to implement in this work. I'm not familiar with whatever arrangements that would, it would come with between WASAFCA and Crown when that property is acquired. We put that condition on the Hart project because there were so many offsites at that time that were not presently in WASAFCA's plans. In the Crown case, these are all onsite development.
Yeah. I mean, it just seems fair that, I mean, if he's going to build you, you have to pay for it. But I didn't know if we approved this, whether we pay for it as local people. Let me ask you this then. When we talk about the tower being so far 145 feet away, and of course, in our policy, it says you can't have two towers within 1,000 feet. Right? Unless there's a need because there's no covering.
Yeah. The policy reads that in that scenario, that the tower, the proposed tower, we need to come before the planning commission, you know, for review because in this case, the both projects were coming before the planning commission anyway.
Right.
So, all that, and that, the only difference in that scenario is there are some facilities, like in industrial areas, can be done at zoning administrator authority. But if they two were proposed close together, then the new one would have to come to planning commission instead of zoning administrator.
So, if we approve this project tonight, who's the first tower? The Hart project because they were voted in first? Or the Sneed project because they may be able to start construction first?
That would be a market-based decision in terms of, you know, who had a project that they could bring to bear and pull building permits and commence construction on.
So, it could be a rush to your counter tomorrow morning?
Well, it's possible.
Well, I mean, that doesn't seem right. I mean, we talked in our policy that we have a policy that says, here's your tower, and then you can't have another tower within 1,000 feet unless there's a need for it because there's more carriers. And yet, we seem to be violating our own policy somewhat.
Yeah. The policy only requires planning commission consideration of a proposed new tower in this scenario. It doesn't say that towers, two towers within 1,000 feet of each other are prohibited. It only says is that when you do bring in a second tower that's within that distance, when there's co-location opportunity available, that it requires planning commission review.
Yeah. But I mean, there has to be a need. I mean, the one tower is full and can't take another carrier and you need another carrier. That's how I always interpreted our policy. Okay. All right. Don't know. But we could talk about trees for one second if we could, and I'd like to talk about trees. I asked, you know, to see if you couldn't get Deena to come in tonight.
I apologize. She was not available.
Because it would be so imperative to talk about some of these issues because I've been in the construction area for about 40, 45 years and the construction of one of these roads requires that you start digging a little bit and putting in road base and then you put in rock on top of it and you compact this and keep compacting it. And it has to be compacted in order to take one of those heavy trucks in there, like a fire truck, should we ever need one. The problem I've seen with this is we have trees that we're going to have the road right up to the base of the tree. So, we're going to cut off the drip line. And you're not going to have water just go right through this road unless it's not put together right. It's going to just roll off this road pretty much unless we get an abundance of rain. I'm sure something could go through. But I mean, the general concept of those roads are the water doesn't go through. The water just rolls to the side. I don't see how we're accounting for that drainage of that property, nor do I understand quite how we're going to take care of these trees because I think you're going to kill a few trees with the road. And I'm not too concerned about the trees on the Sneed property because of his trees. But you have trees on the neighbor's property. According to what I'm seeing here, you have two or three trees on the east side that are right on the neighbor's property and the road's right up against the tree. And I'm concerned that that should, that'd probably kill the tree. Wouldn't we have to talk to the neighbor about that?
Well, the Arboris report does address those trees that are adjacent and does reference potential need to do some pruning on those as they extend into the Sneed property. The tree removal on this particular project, you know, really has been the same, you know, matter as it's been essentially since the project, you know, began. We knew from day one that there would be tree removal, potentially heritage, you know, trees. The city's municipal code addresses removal of trees that are of heritage or otherwise protected status. As a result of development, it provides an objective standard. It does not expressly prohibit tree removal. It's, although it's generally not favored, it does specify that if you do indeed remove trees, what the mitigation requirements are.
Well, and I totally agree. I'm just telling you that in my limited experience of 40 or 50 years of watching these things being built, you're going to start killing trees with that road. And my concern is the neighbor's trees more than Mr. Sneed's trees because they're his trees. But in the fact that we have a neighbor, that person should at least be well aware that he has the potential of losing his trees out there. And that worries me. But you brought me to my last comment I'm going to make tonight at this point. And that's the fact that if we have all these trees, instead of planting little trees, and I couldn't tell by the design we saw tonight, but it looks like they're going to plant fairly good-sized trees, I'd like to see us spend a little more money and buy bigger trees in a box and get a jumpstart on rather having a bunch of little three-foot trees out there. Maybe we could get some 10- or 20-foot trees out there because we have so much we have to spend anyway to get these trees.
Yeah. The plans show 30-inch box trees, which is a very substantial tree. Typically, you see only a 15-gallon one planted as a bare minimum.
And I saw that, but I didn't know what that meant. So, I still put my comment that rather than give Deena more money, I would rather see us buy larger trees. So, I think it would take away some of the immediate view of what we see.
And that is one of the conditions is the 30-inch box trees, which is a substantial tree to start with.
Thanks, Commissioner Moore. Commissioner Gar, Debbie?
I also wanted to just review this a little bit and provide some comments. First of all, thank you, everyone, for your participation and your information. It's been valuable for me to take a look at this much more closely and all the work for the applicant and working with local governments so that we can, you know, get a good handle as to whether or not this is possible in moving forward with this proposal. I also agree with Commissioner Leibig that it is, you know, I cannot make the justification that there is a significant gap in coverage and that we did approve the Hart project. And the distinction I'm making there is that, that there are other entities that could be considered instead of the Crown project to be able to replace the tower there, if that's possible. So, that, for me, is a separate issue and a distinction. And what it is, that is our responsibility. Aesthetically, it looks better. The Hart project does look better in the way that it's set up and the setbacks that Commissioner Leibig presented. It probably meets what it is, what we're looking for, for the neighbors to be more comfortable. And, you know, we are in a situation where we do have to address this and have to make a decision. I felt we did make a decision with the Hart project. However, given that, I also want to take a look at, you know, with my fellow Commissioners, in moving this project forward and, you know, giving permission to those that are making the decision and the final decision. I, my, my main concern is not having two towers there. And I, and I feel pretty comfortable that that will not happen and that there will be one tower placed. And I, you know, think the design is okay. Both have the same design. And I just wanted just to have some, just to guarantee that there will be one and that's pretty much it. And, you know, that, that is one of my main concerns.
And we were also concerned about a, you know, two, you know, two-tower scenario. And that's partially why we had some pretty strict conditions initially recommended on the Hart project. Last time, that the Commission ultimately changed and we had intended to have those same conditions on this particular project as well. You know, what's, what's unique about this situation is that, you know, you can literally count on your one hand, you know, how many carriers are out there and thus how many potential tenants there could be on a tower to pay ultimately that, because the carriers ultimately pay the freight on a project because they pay rent to the tower owner, who then pays rent to the, to the landowner. So, you know, we think it's unlikely that you would have two, two towers out there just by purely economics, although it is... just by purely economics, although it, it is possible, we think it's not likely, but it is possible. All depends on the economics of, how many carriers does one need to have signed up to make a project, you know, economically viable?
In, taking a look at all the background and all the work that has been done with the, the Crown Castle project, I, I feel really comfortable moving forward, moving this particular project forward, because it seems that they have done a real thorough job and have worked closely with those to protect the environment and, and also just making sure that, you know, I think the neighbors are involved in preparation, planning, have made accommodations as requested for the appearance, and so I think that they are pretty, pretty cooperative and have done quite a bit of planning in their presentation today.
Thank you. I would like to look to my commissioners for a motion. I have no comments. Anyone? Back to a motion?
I could make a motion, and you guys can vote on it. I recommend, or I move denial of the project based on reasons I articulated earlier, as well as additional environmental impacts as a result of the loss of trees.
I'll second.
Could I have a roll call vote? Leibig?
Aye.
Austin?
Nay.
Olson?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Guerrero?
What was the count?
One and three, I think.
I think we're at three-two?
Three-two.
Or three-one?
Three-one.
Three-one?
Aye.
Perez?
Aye.
Thank you.
Any interested party may appeal the decision of the planning commission in this matter to the city council by filing a written appeal with the city clerk within fifteen days of tonight's action, and the appeal must be accompanied by the appropriate filing fee.
Thank you. Back to item number two, did our applicant?
I do not see her here, so we will bring this back at a subsequent meeting.
Okay.
There's no need to vote to continue it.
Okay. Do I have any informal discussion? Could I get a motion to adjourn?
You know, could I make a, just a comment to David? This is a comment to you, and it, you know, there was a thing in the city staff about we're trying to get, somebody's going to come in and help us do something to streamline the permit process, or allow us to see where the permit process is? Do you know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, what you're, most likely referring to is the online version of our Exela permitting system, which will allow people to check the status of their, primarily building permits, but other projects too, you know, online, and they will even be able to submit some basic building permit applications online, and then also soon, you'll be able to apply for and renew business licenses online.
You know, that process currently exists up in Placerville, and I didn't know if you knew that, but you might look into it just a touch before they show up, so it might be something that we should.
Yeah, this is something that's been in the works for quite a while, and we're actually anticipating going live on that toward the end of this month.
With that, I'd make a motion to adjourn.
We do? What about number one? I'll second, all in favor? Meeting adjourned.